Your mic's on.
It's high.
They spent so much money on that thing. I'll bet you that was three million bucks in there, easy.
It's sad. Somebody will come along and they'll go, but somebody will, money will come to there, take care of it, but...
They can't.
Can't?
Gonna have a golf course.
The golf course.
The handbook calls the clubhouse an accessory to a golf course, so until you be established golf course, you can't.
I'd like to open this Sparks Planning Commission meeting by six, and we apologize for the delay, for technical problems. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Beal?
Here.
Commissioner Brock?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
Present.
Commissioner Dunne?
Here.
Commissioner Bala?
Here.
Assistant City Attorney Doug Forman?
Here.
Community Services Director John Martin?
Here.
The section for public comment, anybody out there in the audience would like to address this commission for any reason at all, they do so, you have up to three minutes. See you none. We'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Turn to approve as submitted.
We have motion to approve the second.
Second.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Carries. We now need approval of the minutes, and we wanted to review the June 13th Planning Commission Study Session first, the minute zero.
Mr. Chairman, I, I thought the minutes as submitted looked, looked fine to me. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the June 13th, 2017 Planning Commission Study Session.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I would like to review the, and a motion on the possible minutes for June 15th of the Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thought staff did a great job on these meeting minutes. It was a long meeting, I thought they did a great job capturing the, the public comment portion and the commission comments, so well done, staff. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of the June 15th, 2017 Planning Commission as submitted.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And we have one extension.
Yeah, abstaining, I was not present.
All that carries. We'll move on to announcement of committee reports.
We have none, Chairman.
Any informational items? All right. And we'll move on to a public hearing item, PCN 17-0030. It's consideration for conditional use permit for an application of minor recreational study.
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, Ian Crittenen, senior planner. This conditional use permit request is from Christian Meyer to operate a minor recreational use in the industrial district in a portion of a building located at 1455 Deming Way. You can see here on the site plan, here on the east is Deming Way, on the south is Greg Street, and the proposed area is, this rectangular area that will pop out is the, the actual space that they're proposing to occupy. This building was built in 1981, and the applicant is proposing to occupy a 5,267 square foot space in the building. There are six findings associated with conditional use permits. Finding T1, I'm sorry, that should be C1. Finding C1 requires compliance with the comprehensive plan. The proposed use is a non-residential use and would support economic vitality by increasing business diversity in conformance with goal MG1. The proposed use is also a conditionally, or a commercial use south of I-80, which is in conformance with policy MG2. Finding C2 requires compatibility with adjacent zoning and land use. All properties adjacent to this property are zoned industrial, they also have a land use designation of industrial. Staff believes that this use is compatible with adjacent uses. A letter of, from a property owner across Deming Way was received and submitted, which disagrees and feels that this is not a compatible use. Findings C3 and C4 require that the impact to natural resources and affordable housing be addressed due to the fact that this building was built in 1981, is located in the industrial district where housing is not allowed and the size of it is not enough to have a large impact on the number of jobs in the area. We feel that these two findings can be made, staff does. Finding C5 requires that other impacts associated with this use be addressed. The major concern from staff regarding this use is the impact of parking on this property and potentially adjacent properties and, and even potentially in the right of way. The site has 48 spaces. This site, this use would require, per our code, 23 parking spaces, and in order to diminish that impact, staff recommends a condition addressing the hours of operation. The analysis for that was, performed by staff was that the, the hours of operation that are being proposed are from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM on weekday, or throughout the week. The thought being that throughout at least nine months of the year, the heavy user of this type of use is younger children, and so the observation of other similar uses is that the real pickup time for their recreational portion of their use is 3:00 to 4:00 PM, and so the analysis was that that's when this time would, the, the real traffic impact of this would pick up, or the parking impact would be about the same time that the parking impact for the center itself would be starting to reduce and die away. And so we thought that those hours of operation limitation would allow these two uses to stack, sharing that parking when one is not using it. And the opening at 11 would allow for the retail portion of this use to operate before those times. The retail portion is about 950 square feet, which only requires about four parking spaces, which is a lot easier to accommodate even when the other businesses would be running potentially at higher parking capacity or volume. The summer hours are a concern to staff, that would be a time when younger children would have the opportunity to be there more during the middle of the day, and is a concern that, that has not, as of yet been, been addressed by staff of how to, how to address that summertime potential impact. Finding C6 requires that this request be noticed. The notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on June 22nd, and notices were mailed out to adjacent, the 33 adjacent property owners that are within 500 feet of this property. That's the end of my presentation, if you have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to answer those.
Occupants of that building, are, have you any idea what they are, who they are?
I do not have a detailed list of the, the additional occupants of that building.
So we have no idea that their hours of operation and their parking spaces will really be come available if needed, is that right?
That, that level of analysis was not performed, no.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ian, in, in your opinion, so there's 48 parking spaces on site, do you know the, the breakdown between how many are in the front of the, the building and as opposed to the rear, and kind of how they're used today?
So there are 30 parking spaces on the Deming Way side, and there are 18 parking spaces in the back. There, it looks like some more, if you were to try to count there, there's actually some spaces there in the back that are actually like garage door drives, so that there's not parking in front of those. So 30 in the front and 14 in the rear. As far as how they're used at this point, you know, it'd be kind of a guess, but based on looking at the way the building's laid out, I would assume that it is mostly employee parking in the rear and customer parking in the front, although I don't know that how, how well that holds across the board there.
Thank you.
It, um, so the parking on Deming, Deming Way, typically this is gonna, a minor recreation facility with a party room in there, guessing there's gonna be parties, kids' parties. The letter that was written was mainly concerning of kids darting in and out of the way. It, would it be possible for, it, on Deming Way that there is street parking if the parking lot is full, that if there is cars parked on Deming Way, that the possibility of people crossing, I mean with trucks coming?
My review is, I don't believe there is on-street parking on the east side of Deming Way. It appears that the parking for that, that property actually backs out of their property onto Deming, so there wouldn't be parking in front of that, that parking, that's a, an old parking style that we don't typically approve now, but some of these older properties have, have that set up, and you're not typically supposed to back into traffic, but you know, where, where it exists, it gets to continue to exist. So I don't believe there is actually on-street parking on the east side of Deming Way, but the west side for sure, there is on-street parking, and it would be available to anybody that wants to go to any of those businesses to be able to park on Deming Way, on that side.
Crittenen, this business has a presently operational retail component, is that correct? This business, this applicant has a presently operational retail component, is that correct?
They're working on it, yes, correct.
Working on it, does the retail aspect of this require additional parking?
Application, the retail portion would require parking as, as any business would. The space allotted to retail on their, their site plans that were submitted is roughly 950 square feet. The parking ratio for, for retail parking is one space per 400 square feet, or 300. Thanks, Karen. And so that gives you about four parking spaces that would be required just for the commercial component of this business.
Required for the retail component, but is the retail component part of the CUP, or is it allowed by right in the industrial zoning area?
It is allowed by right, it, it is required to meet the locational criteria, which this site does.
Purpose of using a conditional use permit to allow for a use like minor recreational is what?
To address potential impacts to, from the, the operation of this conditional use on adjacent uses, on the available infrastructure and so forth.
What's the parking ratio for a minor recreational use?
One space per 200 square feet.
Oh, in the planning department's wisdom, the minor recreational use is more intense than the retail in the sense that it requires more parking, is that correct?
Correct.
Do you know whether or not the applicant has a lease that assigns them exclusive use of any number of parking spaces?
I believe they do, I believe that their, their lease lots them 11, they, they are here, they can speak to that specifically, but I believe that was submitted with their, their application, I could find that.
Flex also have parking spaces assigned to them in their lease?
Not even from information about whether or not.
Thank you.
Applicant here. Care to step forward, give your name? Want any information you have, 20 minutes?
Okay. And so first to address your additional questions, Chairman, about the surrounding businesses, our direct businesses around us, one is a diesel shop, one is a florist, there's a general contractor, and a graphics company that signs banners, so on and so forth. As far as their hours of operation go, walking through the complex, most of them are in a nine to five, eight to five hour of operation range. So florists have walked into the shop? I don't believe so, I believe that they cater to the outside, so I haven't physically been in their shop, they have a small showroom area, but they generally just want to tell the players to let it go, if I was there. So, real quick, as Ian had mentioned, the recreational use is for an indoor Nerf arena that provides for parties, for people to come in, play on an open basis as well, and then we do have the retail shop open in the front. The hours of operation, which set by the guidelines of the planning staff, would actually be beyond what we would need. Our planned hours of operation are noon to either 8 o'clock or 9:00 PM, depending on the day of the week. We also plan on being closed Monday and Tuesday, so that would help, you know, against any impact for the midday business, you know, the nine to five hours of the surrounding businesses that we wouldn't even be there on Mondays and Tuesdays. We see our peak business hours as from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, so again, as far as parking goes, you know, we see that as they start vacating, that's when most of our customers will be coming into, do business with us. As far as, let's see, I know there was some concerns with the surrounding businesses, trucks coming through, so on and so forth. Most of our parking spaces within the set building should account for what people are coming in, we don't foresee people crossing the street, there is no parking, no public parking on the east side of Deming, as Ian had mentioned, the only public parking on the street would be on the west side. Ian had also mentioned there are other similar businesses in the surrounding area, there's a batting cages, there is a fly high trampoline, and there's a gymnastics area that are all zoned within Sparks and Country, and we all see that our business is similar to those next business hours, and not necessarily going to be an issue as far as more industrial type businesses.
Are you under a lease?
We are. Under a lease, and we do have a set number of parking spots that are allotted to us. For us, we know what we have dedicated as far as the surrounding businesses, I tried reaching out to our property management, I don't know if they have a set number of parking spots assigned to those specific businesses. We, the way our business is set up, there is certainly a cap on the number of people that we can have in and out, even if we reach our maximum capacity with the parties, with the arena area, and with our retail section. The arena itself will only allow for 20 people to participate at a time, so even once we reach our maximum capacity, it's still not going to exceed the guidelines set up by the City of Sparks, peak hour trips, so on and so forth.
You're currently under a lease at this property?
Yes.
Did you obtain this lease in order to start this business, or did you have a previous business in the same property?
We obtained the lease to start the business.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and could you identify yourself for the record, I don't think I...
Absolutely. My name's Christian Meyer, and then this is Hans Meyer, my partner, father.
Thank you, appreciate that. I was kind of wondering a little bit more about your business, is it more geared towards younger children, or kind of teenage, or older kind of paintball?
Really, it's anyone who would like to participate, it's, if anybody's familiar with Nerf and, and the sort of blasters they have, they come in three varieties, they have darts, they have discs, and then what we're gonna be primarily using are their little golf ball shaped balls, they're all foam, they're all very soft and safe, but that allows for people of basically set age of seven and up to participate.
Do you guys, is it mostly private parties, turn, or tournaments, or just individual people going in and playing each other?
Just a little bit of all, so we will offer a open place of, 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 a per round to participate, we have the party element as well, which again, you know, allows people to come in, in a full party setting, participate in the arena section, and then... to come in, in a full party setting, participate in the arena section, and then have their cake and, and, you know, party festivities in the designated party room. And then we are also planning a league of sorts that allows people, more competitive people to come in, and it's a tournament type setting.
My final question is, do you think, you know, if this conditional use permit is approved, if, if the business reset, people would utilize the parking in the rear of the building, or they kind of be more inclined, your customers, to use the front of the building?
It's tough to say because obviously we haven't dealt with customers yet being in the property space. I foresee that in the off-peak hours, which for us, which would be peak, you know, the five to eight, most people will be in the front part of it because that's where the majority of the open spaces will be. In the non-peak hours, my guess is that they will park where they can find spots. And there is also going to be a certain pickup and drop-off element as well when you're dealing with children. So parents will be dropping children off, picking them up within the parking lot area in front of our building.
Byron, is there a sidewalk along the southerly boundary of the building?
There's not a sidewalk. There is a large grass area that, you know, there's a bus station that's right there. We see people walking through the grass area all the time. But there is no designated sidewalk there.
Have the ability under your lease to designate which eleven spaces and you can use in the parking lot?
Currently, the way the lease is set up is they're undesignated, but we get eleven spaces to utilize. I would have to check with the property management if we're able to designate all of the spaces or at least a portion of those.
Okay. Thank you.
In a lot of these facilities, there'll be twenty kids in the party room, guessing, and then twenty probably playing. And then it kind of goes through a rotation as it goes. You did mention the other three or four that are around that area and that what we've, what we've had in the past, what we've, what I see is you drive by the gymnastics place, you drive by the, the trampoline place, is that there gets to be some hard feelings. A lot of times with adjacent property owners or tenants that have designated parking spaces to where it gets to where you see chains up, you see some things like that. That's my, my, one of mine's biggest concerns is that there's certain people right now that do have leases in that area that probably have designated parking places that, just like you do in your lease. That's a concern that I think that for those people that already have leases that do lease that building out, is there any way that you could possibly alleviate that? Are you saying just because the hours are going to be different that you're probably not going to come into play?
Yeah, the main thing is that the hours are off the, of the main business hours. You know, as Ian had mentioned during the summer, that might be a little bit different just because, you know, school's out, you have parents barely, not working. We can do everything we can to try and alleviate parking or designate parking spots directly around our building. Again, that probably won't be the full twenty-three spots, but, you know, basically, it, it comes down to, you know, we see the bulk of our business happening once spots become available after the main business hours.
Byron, one more question for you. I, I noticed the figure in terms of anticipated employees. How many of those employees do you anticipate to be on shift at any given time?
Including ourselves, probably three in addition.
Okay. And so five employees. Forgive me for prodding, but do you travel together? Okay. I mean, you can, you can understand my concern, yes. Five, five, five of twenty-three is nearly twenty percent of the parking allotment. And so that is why I am interested in how many employees.
If I can interject, if you don't mind. Is there, can we get a picture of the layout up here so everybody can be looking at it at the same time? Oh, no, I'm sorry. I meant the aerial, that one, yeah.
Oh, that's the actual?
Yes.
Mr. Critten, would you mind zooming in on the actual building for us?
Yeah, it's where the star is.
My old eyes can see that a little better.
Leave it just like that, if you would please.
Sorry. One more second. There you go.
Okay. So my, my comment was really going to be, as you can see, the building itself is outlined in, in blue there, and that's where the forty-eight, I believe, spots are counted. But you can also see that the, the property extends to the other businesses that face, for example, Greg Street right there. Again, one of the keys to what we are putting together is the fact that it is operating during hours that at least most of these businesses don't. And as you can see from the, from the aerial view here, there is further opportunity, although it's, I mean, not within our authority, of course, to allow people to park there. But there is opportunity for people to park elsewhere on the property in the hours that we're ultimately open. So, you know, is there provision officially? No, there isn't. But as you can see from the actual layout, there is opportunity for parking on the property, other than the forty-eight spaces that are up, that are up there.
I, I think we're all receptive to that. And I suppose my concern goes a little further in that while it's nearly twenty percent of what you are required to have under the code, it's nearly half of what you're allotted under your lease as a worst-case scenario, which leaves six. And so even if you agreed to a condition, and I hope you will consider this, but if you agreed to a condition whereby your employees agreed to park in the back of the building, it's still, six is still far short of, of the number we need to get to. And while we can all see that, there are, of course, other available parking spaces. In particular, I'm concerned with the idea that we would be allowing something that infringes on the property interests of another lessee in the complex. That's, that's my concern at this point.
As you had mentioned, having additional employees parked in the back, that was part of the floor we had planned, as you can see, to the west side of the building where we're located, there's four or five parking spots directly there, which we would utilize for employee parking, car parking as well.
Thank you.
I have one more that I'd like to, for clarification from my part. If you have twenty occupants in the arena, so on and so forth. Are they in their timeframe?
But then you'll have coming and going.
Time frame, just sort of say. In this, so does that mean you'll be coming and going traffic?
Potentially, you know, what we're seeing. And there are other businesses in, you know, the country that would be doing the same thing that we are, and I've spent a lot of time talking with them. Ultimately, what you find is the timeframe that you're talking about is fifteen minutes. So it's fifteen minutes per match. And then most people stay there for an hour, two hours. They'll play multiple matches, or they can. Absolutely, during.
So it's not that you have another group waiting fifteen or so, and then they got to move out after fifteen minutes and another come on?
Right.
So they'll go eat cake and whatever.
Get pulled, come back, pass it, do it all over again. Yeah, so when it comes to the party, the party participants will be allowed an hour of arena time, and then they're allowed forty-five minutes of designated parking time. So once they use their arena time, that's technically, if they want to have that first round after the party's over, they'll want to, so. But again, you know, you're talking about. Party participants being there for basically a minimum of two hours.
Is there a limit on the number of party participants?
It is.
What is that?
Again, we can only support twenty people in the arena at a time. Party participants would be that twenty plus.
Our code, so many occupants in that particular square footage.
In speaking with our general contractor, what he had found was the square footage and the number of occupants on paper would be far more than what we would foresee. And in turn, we're looking at putting a capacity of a hundred people total on the entire building.
Public hearing, and anybody who wishes to speak on this particular item may do so. You have up to three minutes. Sir, wait, you come here and you state your name and address, and then at the end of this, would you fill out a card with our secretary? Thank you.
My name's Rich Dashing. I'm the owner of the property across the street in Demming. Sierra Runway, Travis Court. Also in the building directly across the street, which is fourteen twenty Demming Way. So I have the same issues that the planning commission has with parking. We've been on this property for, my family has, for almost forty-five years. And I don't think there's enough parking, not even close for him to do what he wants to do with his business. I'm not against you at all, okay? So I want you to know that. Most of the tenants in that complex, a lot of them use their parking spaces for other stuff, like, for example, the diesel repair guy has broken cars in his spots that stay overnight. The contractor next door has like a small trailer that he uses during the day that he parks in the spaces. So the spaces aren't open at night after hours, like what you stated. And I don't know exactly where your, where the building cutoff is, but I don't know how they're allocating you even eleven spots, because what I've noticed in the last couple of weeks, there's only like four or five empty spots in that complex. So if the property owner's not going to allocate you designated eleven spots, people are going to want to park in other places, on the street, for example. And if you look in the photo, it's not, it's not up right now, but the photo that I have, our employees park on Demming on the east side. We have them park in the dirt perpendicular to the street, just so it opens up the street more, because there's so much truck traffic. Our company hauls a lot of oversized loads and stuff, so a lot of times we do need the whole lane in and out of our property. And you'll notice the tenant that I have on the corner, their cars parked, they basically have to hop the curb in order to park in front of the business. And then you've got two gates that we access, so there is no parking on the east side of Demming whatsoever. So I'm concerned with people parking there and us not being able to get into our business. I don't see people parking on the opposite side of your building unless you're going to have a door on both sides to access it, because currently, it's not safe for people to park on the west side of the building and walk around to the east side of the building to the front entrance. With the amount of traffic on Greg Street, you mentioned the two other businesses that are similar to yours. I'm very familiar with them. They're on streets that aren't as busy as Greg Street. There's trucks constantly coming, like, for example, my business, trucks are coming west on Greg Street, making a right-hand turn onto Demming. If there's kids and people getting out of their vehicles trying to park on the street right there, it's basically going to stop our trucks. And if you notice, like in the picture, our trucks are about a hundred and ten foot long, so they're going to be hanging out in Greg Street. They're not going to see that there's people getting in and out of their cars until basically they make the corner. So my concern is parking. I, I mean, I would think that if you had a different spot in that complex, that it would be much more viable, just from the traffic side and parking. But I notice a lot of the businesses, they aren't just eight to five there. People rent those buildings for, you know, storage and for personal use, and they're there at all, all hours. And they're going to be pissed off if they pull up and they can't park in one of their dedicated parking spaces. So it's going to be, in my opinion, it's going to be a problem. So.
Time, excuse me. I, oh, okay. Thank you very, thank you very. Hey, I ask you one question before you go, if you don't mind. Do you have an estimate of how many times a day during the business hours that that trucks go up that street to Greg, to intersection?
I couldn't give you an accurate estimate, but I could tell you that my business, I own fifty trucks. My trucks come in and out all day long. My peak hours are at the end of the day and the beginning of the day. So like from three o'clock to six o'clock. I would say there's other trucking companies similar to mine on the same street, Aperol Trucking, PDM Steel, you know, large trucks. They're all the same construction trucks or the same hours as what our business is. And, and it's that three to six window. And it's six days a week. I mean, Sundays is the only day that is quiet in that neighborhood.
Thanks.
Okay.
In the intersection there, Greg Street is free-flowing and Demming is stop signs?
Correct.
When your trucks exit your facility, which way do they normally go?
Okay, so when they exit, depending upon which one of our gates they come out of, they'll go either direction. If I have trucks coming out the gate closest to Greg Street, we actually recommend them going up to Klepey Lane to come around to catch the signal light, because it's safer crossing traffic. If trucks come out of our Klepey, Klepey Lane gate, they will come down, Demming headed to the south towards Greg Street to make a right-hand turn in front of the proposed.
Preferably to make a right-hand turn.
Correct. Not to make a left, just because it's hard to get across that street. At most hours anymore it is. Okay. Thanks, guys.
Is there anyone else still in the public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to the commission for consideration.
Chairman, if I might, before the, before the commission considers this item, I'd suggest to you that the staff report as presently written is insufficient to alleviate some of the questions and concerns as it relates to parking, as, as they relate to traffic. It would be my suggestion at this point that the commission continue this matter and allow Mr. Critten the opportunity to do a more thorough analysis on parking and get a survey of what the traffic looks like on this street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the clarification from, from the attorney. I, I, I certainly agree. I would like to have more information about the different uses in the, in the complex, but I'm, I'm also very concerned with the information we've heard from surrounding businesses and the potential impact that this could have on infringement of other businesses as well, too. From, I'm, I'm not sure, from, from my, my perspective, if additional clarification is going to get me to be able to make findings C-one and C-two. Kind of where I'm, where I'm coming from, I think from the, the C-one perspective, you know, we certainly want to support economic vitality by providing non-commercial, non-residential land uses. And then MG-two, where we want to promote industrial, commercial, and office use south of I A. I think the, the main intent of those policies is that, is that we want to do those types of uses in areas where they're appropriate and they're compatible. From the information that we've, we've, we've seen in our staff report and from tonight in the public comment, I don't think, I, I have a lot of concerns about the commercial nature of this, this proposed use in the industrial area, particularly in the summer. With respect to finding C-two, I certainly appreciate staff working with the app. With respect to finding C2, I certainly appreciate staff working with the applicant and promoting new startups and new businesses in the city. I mean, we certainly want to keep the industrial area filled with, you know, employment opportunities, but I think when it's compatible to do so, we want to do that, not, not at the detriment of, of the area. So with respect to finding C2, I can't, I don't think that it's compatible with the conditions as, as, as written in the staff report. I'm not sure if we're really going to get there. And it's a bummer, because I think this is a cool business. I think it'd be good for the kids of Sparks. I wish this, this was, this was around when I was a kid in Sparks, but I just don't think it's appropriate for the area. Those are my long comments, thank you.
I might ask you to clarify one of your points. You said that you had difficulty making the finding as it, in C1, as it relates to policy MG2 in the comprehensive plan. You said specifically that you saw an incompatibility with respect to the commercial nature of the business, but of course, there are many commercial businesses in the industrial area, and I was hoping that you might expound upon that statement.
Sure, I think where I was going with that is, you know, the other recreational facilities that we've allowed in the industrial area have been specifically conditioned, and they've been specifically allowed in, in locations where they're compatible with surrounding, with surrounding uses. And I think from the information that we, we received and the way the conditions are proposed, this proposed conditional use is not, is not compatible, and I, and it's not consistent with MG2.
Is there something specific as to the locational criteria that you're looking for that staff might explore on your behalf?
Great, great follow-up. I think one concern that I had from listening to public comment was the, the trucking going on in, in this area, and I thought Mr. Cashy brought up a good, good point in his letter that he submitted to the commission about the turn off Greg Street, and if there is no parking allowed on the east side, and if there were, I think there's a potential safety and possibly a liability issue. So I would say, you know, I, I think we're looking at commercial use, I know we want to try to front them along Greg Street where they're appropriate.
Want any information in this discussion? That engage there, and it's a very commercial, but it's an entirely different, how can you put it, different area. It's, it's on its own little level, it's got its own parking places, it hasn't got the truck traffic at all that this has, and then so it, 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 the commercial use can be there under the right conditions, I assure. But some of this, like you said, Doug, I think has to be fine-tuned, and we, I really think we should have a lot more information on it. And that's my opinion. I agree that it's a tremendous, tremendous step, and I love to see it go, but I'm not too sure this location is for it until we have more surrounding information. We can be certain of the parking, we can be certain of your growth, we can be certain of the other occupants thereabout and the effect of the traffic might have on that particular area. We certainly must look out for those little ones with that kind of traffic, dashing out between cars and whatever they may do out of your presence. So I would like more information. If, if it be up to the risk of the commission, and I hate to put thoughts in your mind, I would love to see us make a continuance of this if it possibly can be done and re, more fine-tune some of these areas and then have staff give us additional information on these items.
Mr. Chairman, I, I just have one thing I'd like to interject, too. I mean, because it seems to me, I work in that area, and I know that Flying High Trampoline Park is in a building that's not too dissimilar than the one that they're looking at their indoor facility in. So I think I would like to make sure that we're consistent. I mean, if it's approved and compatible with that building that Flying High is in, you know, we should look at that being the same type of a deal with this opportunity. So I would like for that to be looked at as well, because they are extremely similar, and there's a lot of traffic going through there. Appreciate Mr. Cashy's comments, too. He was representing himself, not necessarily other businesses. The other businesses should have been here to speak on their own behalf, but that's just my two cents worth.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, and I guess this is for, is there a condition, I think it's put at condition four, saying that the employees of the applicant shall be limited to the west side of the facility for parking?
I believe you could do that. I know Mr. Crittenon is working on a, on a condition like that. I, I do hope that the applicant would be receptive to a condition. I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be. So yes, you can, you can make that condition, it becomes a question of enforcement, of course. So yes, of course, you could include that.
The place for that, I believe, would be to continue this, to give the staff, to put some conditions into this.
Well, the, the difficulty, Mr. Chairman, is that, you know, if, if Commissioner Fuens wanted to make a motion and include that, that condition, he could do so tonight. If you wanted to entertain a motion for a continuance to explore certain issues, quite helpful to staff in terms of crafting the conditions that we're, that we're thinking about. I'm not certain that staff is privy to much more information than you are in this instance, and, and so I don't know how effective we'd be tonight at, at alleviating the parking concerns.
Okay, you have a thought when we get to the tough ones, this one. Anyway, the, the, this commission just wants to go ahead and make a motion other than that, but that's their privilege. So if we wanted to discuss this further, we can. Somebody would like to take an attempt at a motion on the show.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I've stated my reasons that I can't make findings C1 and C2. Not sure how this will go, but I'll make a motion to deny the conditional use permit request associated with PCN seventeen zero zero three zero.
Effectively summarize your earlier comments, please.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I, I think my, my main reason is I don't feel that this proposed conditional use is consistent with this area. I, and I don't believe that with additional parking information, that, that we'll be able to make this proposed conditional use consistent or compatible with the surrounding land uses and businesses in the area. So I'll make the motion to, how's that? Okay.
Have a discussion. Any second.
Second the motion.
Motion taken. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
We have? No. Three to?
Yes, so the motion carries.
Motion carries.
Can we have five minutes, please?
Yes, that, we'll call recess for five minutes, please.
Chairman Peterson, I believe staff's ready if you'd like to reopen the meeting. Staff is ready if you'd like to reopen the meeting, sir. Oh, we're missing, we're down on Commissioner, my apologies.
Okay, I'd like to reconvene this meeting, and we're at the point we're going to go into general business items. BCN seventeen zero zero twenty, consideration for possible section, tentative map, application for a single, seven single-family units.
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, Ian Crittenon, senior planner. This is a request by Ceruleum LLC for approval of a seven-lot, single-family tentative map located at the southeast corner of Spanish Springs Road and Brea Circle. Site was rezoned from SF forty to SF seven in two thousand and five. At that time, a tentative map was approved for, again, a seven-lot subdivision, or a seven-lot tentative map was also approved at that time. That tentative map has since expired, and the applicant is now, or the property owner is now requesting a new tentative map. Staff believes that findings T1 through T12 can be made in this case. Finding T1 requires conformance with the comprehensive plan. This development is adjacent to similarly zoned and subdivided parcels, and in such promotes the compact development and reduces per capita cost for infrastructure in conformance with goal MG6. The subdivision is also zoned SF seven, which allows, or the proposed subdivision is zoned SF seven, which allows for a variety of configurations and layouts, as well as diversity in home design in conformance with policy CC eight. Policy T2 requires conformance of the city's street master plan, the proposed subdivision. Bear with me, these maps are very different sizes, so you may have a little bit of an issue as we switch between, oh, no, went perfect. This proposed subdivision will only add one street, this cul-de-sac, which is, at this point, opposed to be private, so it should not have a, an impact on the street master plan. Findings T3, T4, T5, T6, T7, and T8 address potential impacts that a tentative map may have on the public facilities, utilities, fire protection, public safety, and schools. Staff believes that the proposed subdivision, due to its low number of lots, seven, will have minimal impacts on the provision of public services and utilities. Finding T9 requires a, or requires that this request is routed to impacted public agencies. Washoe County Health, Washoe County Schools, and the Regional Transportation Commission responded to the city's request for comments. Their letters have been attached to the staff report, and, and their, their comments have been incorporated into the proposed conditions of approval as appropriate. Finding T10 requires that fire protection is available at this location. Staff believes that this site can be served by the Sparks Fire Department. Finding T11 requires that the proposed subdivision address other impacts. In this case, those other impacts were determined to be architecture and landscaping, and staff proposes, has proposed conditions that will require that the applicant meet or exceed the city standards addressing these issues. And then finding T12 requires proper noticing to be given for this item, and tentative maps are noticed through, which was done for this item on June twenty-seventh. So in summation of those findings, staff believes that the findings associated with this tentative map request can be made, and recommends that Planning Commission recommended, make a recommendation of approval to City Council. That's the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ian, I had a question about finding T11, about the landscaping. I'm, I'm kind of curious about what Title twenty requires adjacent to, when you have single-family adjacent to existing single-family.
In, in which direction are you referring?
That's to the east. It's looking at the proposed. No, to Brea Court.
So residential to residential, there isn't required landscaping, so that'd be fence sides of these properties. There is not required landscaping along those sides, single-family to single-family. They would be required landscaping along their street frontages, and then there are architecture standards that come out of the SS, well, the single-family zoning districts portion of the code that requires certain numbers to be submitted if they have more than a certain number of lots. They're obviously below that, but they still would have to, you know, get some residential architecture reviewed by the city.
I think in the, in the staff report, there was some discussion about, you know, requiring landscaping in, in common areas. I think how this subdivision is laid out, would there be a common area adjacent to the, the two houses on Brea and Court, or is that kind of where the street is?
I would anticipate that to be a common area. The way they're proposing the private street, I would assume the private street to be essentially common area is what I would assume, so, so there would be required landscaping there.
Thank you.
Ian, in the analysis report, you did say the police and fire will be, obviously, by the city of Sparks. The model used to determine the properties in the six-minute response time was currently being updated, and it could not be used for this request, so I think somebody went out and drove it, and it was right under the six minutes. Do we have that fire report?
No, we do not. The, the, the fire department was given an opportunity to comment, and they didn't come back with any comments. And the staff, specifically me, drove that distance to, to determine whether it, it appeared to meet it. Obviously, that's not, you know, the fire department themselves doing it, but they, I tried to contact them, sent them the information, they did not respond back. No, this isn't in the six-minute response time. It's really close to two fire stations. It's hard for me to believe that it's not in that six-minute response time, four-minute drive time. It was under that when I drove it, and I drove under the speed limit for, for that assessment, which is, should give you, us a good idea that it is, you know, tried to do a conservative assessment.
Whether or not this parcel is represented on the presently existing six-minute response maps?
It is on the current six-minute response maps, but there's a, they're being reassessed, and so they're not current.
I understand they're being reassessed. Is it on the current map?
Yes.
What does the current map show?
As far as response time? That it's within the six-minute response time. They don't give out specifics.
Some question on the gas line?
There was a, an email sent to us with concerns about the gas line. That, that gas line is, is near this. That, that gas line is, is near this property, and the request was just that it be shown and flagged on any, during, before any improvements, just so that it made sure it was not interfered with. But it doesn't run through the properties, no.
Jeff, do you want to?
Yes, I, I would recommend that highly.
Any further questions?
Yeah, if it could here, please.
For the record, Mike Raely with Rubicon Design Group, representing the project applicant. I also have J.R. Hildebrand with Tech Engineering, the project engineer. I think Ian did a fairly thorough job in his staff report. We are in agreement with all the conditions. Just to clarify a couple of issues that were raised, I did see the fire response comments, and so on my way to work this morning, I, I live out in Wingfield, so I drove it from the disk drive station at rush hour this morning, so about 7:45 this morning. It took me four minutes and 37 seconds to get from the, the fire station on disk to this site.
Turn your wigwags on.
But that was with no flashing lights. The, as far as the common area, the only common area is the street itself. The lots account for the rest of the property, and those, they will be custom homes, so they will have, you'll install front yards and landscaping, so, to address those concerns. So with that, like I said, we're in agreement with all the conditions and happy to address any other questions you might have.
Question?
Yes, I do. I have one. So the applicant here is Ceruleum, is that, did I say that right?
Correct.
Ceruleum LLC. I just did a quick business search on them, and their license is permanently revoked in, in, for the state of Nevada on the LLC?
I'm not aware of that. I don't know if maybe they forgot to turn in their list of officers or something like that. I know sometimes if you do that, you'll get a revoked status that can be reinstated, but I would defer to Mr. Thornley. Yeah, so I'm not, I'm not sure on that. It was active when we submitted the map.
In rare cases, it would show revoked, but permanently revoked is a different animal in general.
I'm not necessarily prepared to address that tonight, because I wasn't made aware of it until, until this evening, but when we submitted the map, I know it was, it was active, because we submitted documentation to that effect, so I'm not sure where, how we address that tonight.
Yes.
I'm sorry to keep asking for five minutes.
Oh, I, I think we need.
Um, hang on. He's got to call the meeting back to order, Mike.
All right, we'll continue with the.
First off, I apologize for not being aware of that issue of the ownership. Just a quick Google search in the back, the only thing we can find is that it's permanently revoked, so we don't, we're not clear of the status, and unfortunately, the owner's not here tonight, so we would request a continuance in order for us to get the documentation of what the status of the ownership is, so we can provide that with staff, so we can move forward.
Because tentative map decisions are on a timeline per state law, would you waive that timeline on behalf of your client here tonight?
Yes, we're willing to waive the timeline.
Chair Grant, continuance on this, do we need a motion?
Motion.
I'm willing to make a motion. Make a motion to continue general business item PCN 17-0020 till a further date.
You need to specify the date, so.
To the.
August enough, guys, or you need more time?
That should be fine. I, I move to make a motion to continue PCN 17-0020 to the August 3rd Planning Commission meeting.
We have a motion.
A second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Motion carries.
Against that time, again, commissioners, we must appoint the first alternate to the regional, and I'm open for nominations.
Mr. Chair, I move to nominate Mary Brock to the Regional Planning Commission alternate.
We have a nomination, second?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mary. Mary, your vote don't count. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. Thank you for being drafted.
I'll say thank you later. You're welcome, Mike.
Again, I, I really guess I better call a public comment, and there is none, and I'll have comments from the commissioners. I'd like to say one thing about that child recreation thing. It was a tough one, and every once in a while, you have tough ones on here, but I feel better that it's denied than, than we would have put those kids in that kind of environment, in that kind of parking situation, and traffic, and so on and so forth. I'm all for that kind of establishment, but I just don't think that was the location for it.
If I can respond, just for the record, I would like to have seen some more information on it. I would like to have seen it to be continued, so we would have had more information to make the decision off of, and that's just my personal opinion on that.
I'll just comment sections for people, so we can kind of clear the air on that stuff. I know there's people always wondering what we individually are thinking, and there are times to address them, sometimes not, but that was my opinion, and I, I really hated to see the denial, but on the other hand, I'd hate to put those kids in that kind of position. And I don't see where continuance, we could come to any other conclusion, I really don't. We could have got a lot of facts and everything in there, but it might have just muddied the water a little bit, so I don't, that's just my opinion, and I, I'm so sorry that we had to have it under those conditions. And it might be a perfect place for it, but not, not at that particular, particular corner, in that particular establishment, the way it was leased out to other tenants.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I would agree with, with your comments, and I certainly appreciate the discussion tonight from the, from the commission on, on that issue. I think really, you know, maybe this will come up in the regional plan update, but I think we need to have a good discussion about the long-term vision of the Sparks industrial area. You know, it's, it's a very key employment center for, for the region. You know, there's tremendous growth in industrial areas all across northern Nevada, and I think, you know, one of the challenges, there's many challenges in the Sparks industrial area with, with flood, with older buildings, you know, and then, and the transportation, I think, is, is a big one, too. So I think, you know, it would be good, maybe perhaps, that we have a discussion on how to balance, you know, the new emerging startups, manufacturing, large warehouse uses, as well as allow retail and, you know, recreational facilities, and where those would, would be, would be appropriate. I think, you know, Sparks industrial area is, is key. It's key to the city's future, and I think we need to look at how to best position that, that area for, for the future to accommodate new growth.
Mr. Chair, if I may, to Commissioner Brock, I heard your comments. I will work with staff when we have similar types of applications to bring a more thorough analysis to this planning commission. Karen and I, and Ian, and Armando will work to, to bring better data to you.
We appreciate that, because the more facts and the more things that help us, it not only helps that, it shortens up these processes in here, if we have a lot of it all together in the first place. Not, not knocking staff, I think you do a fine job, but there are times that we could fine tune some of these items and make it easier on this commission.
Commissioner Carey?
I agree with you, and I think Mr. Rundle and Mr. Arnellis will be alerted to your comments that you made tonight, and, because we are going to start the regional process here pretty quick, so stand by with staff.
Anything else? I have the power invested in me to adjourn.